Good morning, everyone. This morning is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, via go-to meeting teleconference. At this point, we will stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. America. To the Republic. Which is Sam. One nation. Indivisible. Retractive. And justice for all.
Thank you again. We'll move on to number two. Are there any visitors on the call that would like to be recognized at this time?
Hi, June Hanson, Registrar of Voters.
Hi, June.
Hello.
Thank you.
Hi.
Anybody else? Okay, very good at this point. Then let's move on to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the September 16th, 2020 meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. All right, moving on to number four, which is an appointment, a reappointment of W. David Lavassier, Republican for Historic District Commission for a term until 6/30/2023. So currently, there are vacancies on this commission. There's two full and two alternate seats. So he will be filling one of those seats. At this time, he is the only person that has submitted a name for an appointment to this commission. So at this point, we look for a motion to appoint W. David Lavassier to the Historic District Commission for a term until 6/30/2023.
Mr. Chair, just quickly, this gentleman has an extensive background. I would encourage him to join the Clinton Historical Society as well, if you look at his resume. But I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next, we will move on to the, to approve an adjustment and compensation for the Registrar of Voters. We have the suggested motion that has been presented to us from Carl. At this point, is there any, anybody that would like to have a conversation regarding this?
I'd like to speak, Chairman.
Yes, Dennis.
Dennis Donovan here. And I had some communication I saw across my board here the last 24 hours, but it was my feelings exactly that these Registrar of Voters have not gotten an increase, I think, for a couple of years now, since '17. And quite frankly, I understand now, after looking at the 34 cents, how that's either 2% of $17 an hour. But I can understand, I think, where Mr. Kilduff is coming from with the fact that we're trying to keep everybody at a 2% increase. However, I think the exception here is the fact that these ladies don't get other type of benefits that other employees of the town get that recently got these 2% increases. And so, quite frankly, I would really look forward to introducing a resolution that increases this, this pay raise by a different total. I'm not sure just quite yet what it would be, but I, I think 34 cents is, I don't know, it sort of strikes me funny. I'm not trying to be comical here because these are very serious times, but that's not even the price of a stamp. And, you know, these, these ladies, particularly now, were appreciating the hard work that they've done under these unusual times. And I, I'm not trying to demean anyone. I, again, I understand the town manager's position, but I do think that we could do a little bit better on compensation. My 2 cents.
Thank you.
34 cents.
Christine Gupiel here. I believe we did a thorough review of the salary slash hourly rate across the state for other registers of voters, and certainly, our staff at Clinton is underpaid. And this was done in the last fiscal year, and it's been brought forward a few times during the budget process. And unfortunately, during that process, the different boards and commissions, from Board of Selectment to Board of Finance, it was not, nobody was receptive to making those increases. So perhaps in lieu of this type of increase, we really should just be looking at a, a consideration of what the other ones are making across the state and making it increase so it's commiserate with them.
Anybody else?
If they haven't had a raise in a couple of years, is it possible to look at it as, and I'm not sure how many years it is, but if it was three years, could we do 2%, 2%, 2%? Or two years, 2%, 2%? That would be, a 4% raise would be 68 cents an hour, which is a little less, is a little more agreeable to me. The fact that they can work three hours for one extra dollar is just, just terrible to me. I know how much work they're putting in this year. I see June and Wendy in their, in their office constantly, and the responsibility that they bear. It's not even the work so much as the responsibility that they have, demands that they be treated as the important people that they are to this town. I don't know if, if 4% raise being 2% retroactive and 2% now would be agreeable or not, but I think it's a good place to look at. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Tim. 4% seems a little bit more reasonable, but I think Christine makes a very good point. How does our Registrar of Voters stand versus other Registrar of Voters in the state, particularly towns of our size? I think if we knew that number, I think we should consider, you know, looking at that as a means to determine, you know, what's a fair compensation.
Anybody else? So at this point, I guess we're gonna have to just decide, I mean, or, you know, move forward with a, an amended motion for a pay increase for that we may be all agreeable to, or table it and then go out there and see sort of what's out there at surrounding towns to see the compensation that other towns do provide to their Registrar of Voters. You know, budgetary wise, you know, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, if we can agree on an amount, you know, that everybody's agreeable to now, I mean, it may make sense as well. So just maybe some opinions on that, whether we'd like to just make an amendment to the motion to, to a new pay increase or table it and do some additional work.
Well, this is Tim. I'd like to make a motion that we table it until we have some documentation in front of us, what other town Registrar of Voters are earning.
I'll second that.
Any other further discussion on that motion?
I would just like to interject that if we do come to a conclusion after the fact that we do consider some sort of retroactive pay for the work that both Wendy and June are doing right now. So that'd be under.
As far as that, to me, retroactive just, just hurts this budget, last budget. And I think, I think honestly, my point is move from this point forward.
By the time we actually get to make this increase, it'll be two weeks, two weeks away from an election, and both June and Wendy have both been fully engulfed in this election since the primary and spent a tremendous amount of work for them, and additionally, the other staff in the Town Hall, but particularly June and Wendy have had a lot more work than they have in previous years. Granted, that's significant.
I see your point. I think the, the factor would be how retroactive. I mean, I'm talking back a couple of years, so if you're talking in the recent past, that's different.
I agree, Carol.
You wouldn't typically do a retroactive to previous years. So yeah, it would only be a consideration for this fiscal year.
I can agree with that.
I could probably agree with that also, Carol. How about you?
Thank you. Yeah.
All right, so at this point, then, we have a motion to table this to gather additional information. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. Okay, next, we'll move on to the approval of the just, no, no, to Homeland Security authorizing resolution. We all have a copy of it. It's Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Memorandum of Agreement for the Homeland Security Grant Program. Result of the Town Council of the Town of Clinton may enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and be it further resolved by Carl Kilduff, Town Manager of the Town of Clinton, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town Council of the Town of Clinton, and to do and to perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by self-statements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Move on to number seven, which is the Town Council Goals and Objectives. Obviously, this is some of the information that Carl's put together for us based on the goal setting meeting that we had. Everybody has a copy of the Town Council Goal Setting, including the vision statement with the draft goals and objectives. If nobody has any other comments about this at this point, we can move forward with the, the motion of the Clinton Town Council hereby adopts the attached vision, statement, and goals and objectives to set a direction for the town to aid in decision-making.
Our comment is, I think it's well drafted, and I'd like to thank Mr. Kilduff for all the work that he did to compopulate all our information that we put together and that great meeting that we had last month. And I think this is a real step forward, and I thank you, Mr. Kilduff, for getting us going in the right direction.
Thank you. I agree, Dennis. I think this is great.
Christine Gupiel, although, you know, I was certainly in support of us moving forward on our goals, it would have been nice to have a public input portion, that this information be put out in the press and/or posted and get public input as two goals. We've certainly done that in the past, had a lengthy period of time to allow for people to make comment to it.
This is, this is a Town Council Goal Setting. So this is what we as a Town Council would like to work on. And we know the other avenues of what we may be able to do and opinions that people have, but this is what we as a council would be working towards.
I, I have to agree with you, Chris. This is not, the public's viewed, entered their opinion by voting us to the Town Council. Like I've said before, we have 13,000 people with 13,000 opinions. I think if we ever wanted to put a period at the end of this sentence, this is how it's done, and I appreciate how much effort Carl put into codifying our thoughts and sentiments and making it concise and, and very doable, very livable.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do see Christine's point. I do think I would have invited, welcomed some input from the general public. If we are to make revisions to this in the future, what would be the process? Because I do think Carl's done a wonderful job with this, but if things come up a couple months, a year or so, how would we make revisions, or would we?
If you're gonna make revisions, it would be a motion at a future Town Council meeting. That's why I asked for input repeatedly from the council members since we last met to give me your feedback in terms of what was written. I got that from some of you, I didn't hear that from everyone. This is gonna be the guide for how you are going to operate as a governing board. So these are the goals and objectives, the things you want to accomplish as a governing board. If something else pops up, it'll have to be a consensus vote at the Town Council to amend the goals that you're approving today.
Perfect. Thank you, Carl.
Now, this is Tim. I'd like to just ask a question too. In regards to this statement, is it going to be made public? And if it is, that might be a way that the public can make comments if they know what our vision is for the town.
So yes, this would become public, it would be posted on the Town, on the Town Council portion of the website. It would also be distributed to staff, because the issue now would be staff trying to determine alignment with your goals and objectives and what they can do to help move these, these items forward. So it's, now it moves into an implementation phase after the council sets a broad stroke direction.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. Okay, move on to number, number eight, Chairman's Report. So obviously, I guess the one big topic would be making sure people publicly are acknowledged in relation to the sale of the Old Morgan School. First, obviously, thank Carl for all his work since joining us and getting this to fruition and putting this to bed for us. A lot of hard work that, you know, obviously, that was done in the background between him and the developers, so thank you, Carl, for that. We also obviously need to, need to acknowledge former administrations that were involved in this project for a long, long time. Acknowledge the Planning and Zoning Commission, current and former members of that commission who played a big role in getting this project approved, inland wetlands, all the members on that board and commission. So a lot of people that played into this, you know, this sale and getting it to where we are today. So in addition to the consultant town planner, obviously, a lot of work on his end for that as well, and Land Use Office as a whole. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge all those people who had a, you know, had a hand in getting this to where we are today, because without it, obviously, who knows where we'd be. But thank you again to everybody that was involved in this sale of the Old Morgan Site, and looking forward to going forward, knowing that this isn't a short-term project, a long-term project. So just making sure everybody understands that, you know, we become that welcoming neighbor to, to this new developer in town. Well said. I also did speak to, we had the group before, that was like the welcoming group, that they had started before COVID had happened, welcoming new businesses into town. They would set, they had a couple of things over at their library that they had there, did speak to some of the people that were involved in that, and their willingness to kind of put that group back together, and hopefully, you know, start that process again, where we have these new businesses coming in there, you know, presenting some, some welcoming materials, you know, welcoming them with open arms to our community, and also with the chamber to make sure that they're involved in this going forward as well, so.
Christine Gupiel here. I am part of the welcoming crew, and what we did was create some really lovely bags with contributions from many people in the community, and it would be great if the town could find some monies to help support the welcoming crew. It's pretty minimal, but it allows them to purchase some of those bags in bulk so that they can be dropped off to new businesses. So I don't know if they brought that forward yet, but that should be a consideration if we can find some monies.
Thank you.
How much? Well, how much money are you talking about, Christine?
Probably just a couple hundred dollars, but again, they would have to look at the cost for creating the bags and how many they would need. So I'm not gonna put a number out there, that would have to be a decision as to what they actually need to put in the bags. Again, a lot of it has been contributions by the local businesses that currently exist and trying to promote them as well. So it would be nice again if the town could support them.
Thank you. All right, nothing else, we'll move on to number nine, which is the Town Managers' Report.
Before we do that, can I just make one comment?
Sure.
The welcoming bags, do those go all to, to all the new little businesses also?
Christine Gupiel, yes, they go to all the new businesses, and they started to go into some new residents that moved to town. So when somebody comes to the Town Clerk's Office and we're made aware that a new resident has moved into town, some of the bags can be directed to families, supplies particularly related to families versus maybe seniors, so. But they're, they're very lovely, and they just, you know, I, I think it says a lot about who we are as a community, if we're able to continue to offer those.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good. Okay. Move on to Town Manager's Report.
So I gave you a number of items attached to my normal written report. The most salient item to call your attention to is the summary of our anticipated debt that we're gonna be issuing to refinance some prior bonds. So I gave you the standard import rating review of the town's finances. Our rate, bond rating was affirmed, again, with a positive outlook, so that's, that's more positive news for the town. If you're into that kind of thing, it's, it's a good read. There's some good information in here about the town and the town's fiscal stability. If you're not into reading these kind of things, again, the general highlights are just bullets on what is tabbed as page three, which gives you a good thumbnail sketch of where the town stands in terms of strength and fiscal flexibility. I also provided for you some information that's starting to flow out of the Connecticut Conference Municipalities as it relates to what their legislative agenda is going to be coming forward in the next session. So they're working through a series of committees, giving you what was approved at the last CCM Legislative Committee meeting, so you can get an idea of what are the issues of import that have been fed as the top priority items coming from your peer municipalities. In terms of the rest of the report, I gave you the highlights in terms of where we stand with revale, so that's moving forward. Again, the grand list is a function of what's been known and discovered as of October 1st. So new values will be going out, and then there is a process for the individual to speak to, vision, to view what their value is, contest it if they feel so inclined, before they go to the Board of Assessment Appeals, which normally takes place in March. So that will be moving forward. The Steve Grant application, the notice of awards have been delayed a second time. It's now anticipated that we'll hear something on or around October 15th. This was supposed to have been back in September, and then it was kicked out to last week, and now it's been pushed out to the 15th of October again. Any announcement will flow out of the Governor's Office first. That, the rest of the report is as submitted, you can see where we stand with items at the COG. Town engineer RFPs are being reviewed to come up with a shortlist so that we can go from the nine firms that submitted down to shortlists that would be interviewed and try and make a selection on that front.
Mr. Manager, just a quick, can I ask just a quick question? This, your meetings with RiverCOG and CCM, are those monthly meetings?
The COG is, there's regular meetings, there's been a couple of emergency meetings that have popped up. CCM's meeting schedule is also monthly. They were on hiatus for an extended period of time because of COVID, and have only up and running with virtual meetings at this point.
Okay, because I would appreciate any updates to this PURA, some of the language they're, they're beginning to draft for the, the upcoming session. You could keep us, how that would affect us as a community.
Yeah, I'm not sure, CCM has taken PURA position just yet. They did submit testimony to the current docket that are in, in front of the board, so what we got in the last session was more of an overview of PURA 101, in terms of what the process is and how you involve yourself in their proceedings.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Christine Gupiel, I was just curious how we're gonna handle the new changes to affordable housing, and I know that there was a couple towns that went out and to get the Affordable Housing Grant. This is something we're gonna have to do in, I think it's the next four or five years, and I wanted to know what our plan is. Are we looking to work with some of the other towns, a regional planning agency to address it?
It's in my report, I did call attention to the fact that the Executive Director of RiverCOG is looking at trying to come up with a regional affordable housing plan. He's waiting for OPM's approval for some of their regional service grant dollars to cover that. The process would run much similar to the Natural Hazards Mitigation Study, where there would be an individual annex to each town that would have to be ratified locally, but there would be a regional planning effort wrapped around that would govern that, that process and drive it forward. Theoretically, it would be doable for all municipalities in the COG region at a lower cost than running individual, individual studies. So assuming COG gets the approval of OPM, that would be sort of the easiest process in order to engage rather than waiting for the grant process with the state.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to number 10, which is the Town Council Committee Liaison Reports.
I have a couple, Mr. Chair, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Regulations Committee met on October 1st. They discussed a, a number of items, the TODO and the PND, Contractor Storage Jards, and I wasn't able to determine if they made any particular recommendations. It did seem like the minutes were not posted, however, there was a recording, a rather lengthy recording. And then the Planning and Zoning Regular Public Hearing met on October 5th, proposed amendments to zoning regulation variances to create consistently, consistency with state statutes, amended, as amended with modified language. The Inland Wetlands met just last night, it was a rather lengthy meeting, discussion, and update of Indian River Embankment Project at the New Morgan School, which I can actually look to my right and see. John Trickle from DTC Engineering presented, as did our, as did Todd. Plantings and Fisheries Plan is awaiting approval from DEEP, and there was some discussion of NRCS funding extension. There's also this ongoing issue at 15 Stonewell Lane about discharge of water into wetlands without a permit. So let's stay posted on, there's been some legal advice from Attorney Bennett regarding that issue, and that's it.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else?
Hi, Christine Gupiel. I'm just gonna update on the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan Committee. So the period is really gonna end October 20th. We do not have any more input at this point, but it might behoove the town to put that link back out there one more time and let the community know that this project is gonna be closing October 20th, and then have to get approvals through the state. So it's, it's, you know, and it's important for everybody to understand the hazards within their community and the town, and how it's going to impact them potentially in the future for funding. And so if we can put that out there, that'd be great. For CRAD, our Regional Health District, we had our first weekend with a drive-through flu vaccinations, and we had approximately 180 people vaccinated. I just wanna thank Inold Saeburk Chief Spira and the staff, they made it a very easy process. Our staff nurses, Sherry and the rest of the nurses, did an amazing job trying to vaccinate people through car windows. It's not easy to vaccinate a whole family of five from a car window, but I think it even made it less anxiety-provoking for some of the families. I know some of you. um, from a car window, but, um, I think it even made it less anxiety provoking for some of the families. I know some of you with kids have taken your kids to the doctor's office and tried to vaccinate and it's, it's sort of stressful for them. And this made it a bit easier. Uh, what is really positive about this model, this drive-through model, is when we start to vaccinate the, uh, critical workforces for COVID, um, that we have a plan in place and, um, um, so we're, we're confident about that moving forward. Um, I do know that some of the pediatricians are not booking, uh, flu vaccinations until November and pharmacies don't generally accept kids under 18. So, um, if you're looking to get vaccinations for you and your family, um, they have opened up the website again, the registration at CRAD, C-R-A-H-D dot org. And you can fill out the form, um, and then they'll contact you with the windows of time for vaccinations. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. All right, we can move on now to item number 11, which is, uh, Executive Session Personnel Pursuant to, uh, Connecticut General Statutes 1-206A. We have a motion to go into executive session and invite Carl and Mary.
So moved. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstain? Thank you.
Hey, Eric.
I'm gonna, uh, respectfully depart if that's okay.
That's okay.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. See you guys.
See you guys. Take care.
At this point now, we have a collective bargaining agreement. We look for a motion.
I'll make that motion, Tim.
A second?
A second.
Again.
Again.
Any further discussion? On favor?
On favor?
All right.
All right.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
At this point, we look for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
On favor?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. Take care.
Have a good day.
This conference is no longer being recorded.